Ubusutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self storage in Plumas Lake where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at Plumas Lake self storage dot com.
Good morning and welcome to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. As a courtesy to others, please turn off cell phones or other electronic devices which may disrupt the meeting. If attending via Zoom, please have your microphones muted at all times when you're not speaking. All items on the agenda other than correspondence and board and staff member reports are considered items for which the board may take action. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on action items on the agenda when the item is heard and comments shall be limited to three minutes per individual or group. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance Supervisor House.
Please rise and remove your hats.
Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Here.
Supervisor House.
Here.
Supervisor Fure.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Here.
Supervisor Messick.
Here.
Great, thank you. Next up is consent agenda. All items listed under consent are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion. Any items that board members wish to pull for discussion? Okay, seeing no, is.
So moved.
Okay, I have a first. Okay, and a second. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda, either in person or in Zoom? Okay, none? Okay, seeing none, we have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Next, you will move on to special presentations. We have one item. It is item seven thirty-three, twenty twenty-four. Receive quarterly update from Community Development and Services. Good morning, Rachel.
All right. You guys hear me okay? Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Good morning, Supervisor House. Glad to see you up here.
Rachel, did you share it on Zoom as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not. Thank you. I apologize. Sorry Zoomers. There we go. Thank you. All right. Good morning. I'm Rachel Downs. I'm one of your Deputy Directors from Community Development, and it's always my pleasure to share with you our quarterly development update. As usual, we have no shortage of exciting projects, and we did decide this quarter, as it was the end of twenty twenty-four, to kind of make our focus as a look back and a look ahead. And then I will dive into the specific projects or items that happened within each department in that more refined period of just the end of the year. So we're going to start with kind of a high-level overview and a look ahead. So from our planning department, in twenty twenty four, we wrapped up with over five thousand total lots in our housing development pipeline. A clarification there, those didn't all come in in twenty twenty-four, but as we were ending twenty twenty-four, that is our kind of subdivision pipeline. And then in twenty twenty-five, we look forward to kicking off our general plan and Plumas Lake specific plan updates. So from our building department, in twenty twenty-four, we ended our sixth year in a row with over four hundred building permits for homes, new homes, finalized in twenty twenty-four. And so that was a six-year in a row that that had happened. According to a recent report from the California Department of Finance, Yuba County had the highest growth of all counties at two percent, creating a one percent increase in our population growth year over year. As we've talked about before, these residential rooftops drive commercial growth. So Wendy successfully completed our permitting process in a little, right about three months. And so that's also a great accolade for our building department, just their their speed of which they do business, the speed of permitting that you will find in Yuba County is really unparalleled. And that's a great accolade for our building department in twenty twenty-four. And then in twenty twenty-five, we are expecting numerous commercial permits from both the Feather River Shopping Center and the Plumas, Plumas Commons. And that is in conversation with our developers as they bring us projects. We are at the ready to move those through as quickly as we can. In twenty twenty-four, Public Works received a three million dollar grant to redesign the Lindhurst Avenue corridor. And we are anticipating full funding for the Plumas Lake Interchange in twenty twenty-five and an estimated total project cost of about forty-five million dollars. This twenty twenty-five project will will take a while to finish the design and of course move into construction. But once it is complete, this will provide improved access to the entertainment and hospitality amenities that are developing in the sports and entertainment zone. And then from our Environmental Health Department, in twenty twenty-four, they received a grant to clean up some of the the materials at the property we've talked about with your board previously on Feather River Boulevard. And then in twenty twenty-five, personally, I'm really excited about this one since I live very close to it. But they are actively working on the permitting for the grocery outlet in Marysville. And as a reminder, maybe to the public that that could seem a little confusing at the county, we do manage the food facilities throughout the entire county. So that's why we're helping or we're overseeing the review on that permit within the city of Marysville. And then finally, from our finance and admin team, which includes technology, they did implement an online payment system to enable the booking of Sycamore Ranch again. And then in twenty twenty-five, development customers will soon be able to pay for projects and permitting online, continuing to improve the convenience and efficiency and user experience in community development. Those are our twenty twenty-four look back and our twenty twenty-five look ahead from community development. Going to move into things that happened specifically within the quarter that we're reporting on, which was October, November, and December of twenty twenty-four. So from our planning department, we received a number of new projects this quarter, including a zoning clearance for a new home-based bakery in Smartsville and five final map applications for residential lot splits. Plus, I want to give some kudos here to our planning department. They started tracking a while back the every single inquiry that they were getting so that we could see trends as well as volumes. And so our planning team responded to over three hundred and eighty inquiries just in that three-month period. And that covers subjects from landscaping questions, allowable land use, map extensions, a whole variety, a whole suite of subjects under that planning purview, but really wanted to give credit to that team as well for the volume of questions that they're answering from our residents and our businesses and our developers. Let's see. Planning also received an application for Woodside Village number four, which is a Kresly subdivision located in Plumas Lake, which will add a hundred and thirty-one lots again to our subdivision pipeline. And then our. This is under approved projects. So I just covered kind of new applications. This is moving on to things that were approved, which was two cottage food bakeries in, one was called Wild Flower Baking Company and the other one, the Cookie Shop. And then we also have a new home-based tortilla maker in Plumas Lake. So there's no shortage of fun tasty treats. And then our planning department also approved the housing design for Wheeler Ranch and Woodside Village number four, continuing to provide high-quality housing in Yuba County. And so I want to show you a little sneak peek of those. So this is the design review, kind of mockups from Wheeler Ranch. And then this is the design review, mockup for Woodside Village. So these were approved designs for these subdivisions. And another project I wanted to share with you that was approved was that we were able to amend the land use entitlement for the Recology landfill off Ostrom Road, allowing for the expansion of a new renewable gas facility, which will be developed through an agreement with a company called G2 Energy and WAGA or W A G A Energy. This technology will take gas emissions from the landfill, converted into renewable natural gas, and feed it into a nearby PG&E pipeline. Now, outside of the complex chemistry of this project, which is not my specialty, what I can tell you, and what is important to note, is understanding that Recology properties are one of our highest property tax generating, one of our highest property tax generators in the entire county. And this project is estimated to be about an additional thirty million dollars. So this will continue to drive property tax growth into the county. What I also wanted to note was that Mark, the General Manager of G2 Energy, gave us this quote as we've been working with him for a number of years on his development projects. Note that he is based out of Florida and that he has done projects across California and other states, too. And so this high praise that said, "From the first application for licensing and permits until today, I have had a singularly pleasant experience working with the people serving Yuba County. At every juncture, this county has endeavored to interpret and apply rules and regulations fairly and with uncommon common sense. I don't know of any other agency in California that works as hard as the folks at Yuba County to be fair and reasonable in an effort to support industry and commerce as they do." And I wanted to specifically call that out of a tremendous compliment, not only to your leadership, but to our staff and to really all of Yuba County. And uncommon common sense might also be one of my new favorite phrases. All right, so moving over to our building permits. Each quarter, we provide you kind of a quarter-by-quarter breakdown, year-over-year comparison of all building permits that were issued to show that we are basically on trend right here, this five hundred and ninety-three number, compared to the end-of-year timeframe from years past. And then moving over to our residential permits, which I've already talked a little bit about, the building department issued a hundred and thirty-two additional production home permits this past quarter. That's the number that you're going to see right here. And then how that compares to the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-one. So those were production home permits that were issued this quarter. And then most notably, move over here, this is the number of production home permits that were final for the entire year. So usually, we have on this column kind of like a tracking of how we're measuring up against, like year-to-date against the other years. But since we closed out the year in December, this is the final year. So are the final numbers for the year. So four hundred and sixty-eight production home permits that were given final occupancy in the entirety of twenty twenty-four. And this is how that compares to the last couple of years. Notably, twenty twenty-two was our highest, but twenty twenty-four was right behind it. All right. So moving over to commercial building permits, we've had a little bit of a slow burn the last, the last quarter. And we often find that in community development, a lot of people are working on some of the engineering of their projects, given that construction season is most typically in the latter part of the spring or into the summer. This is just a great accumulation of commercial building permits. But a couple that we wanted to call out would be that we issued a permit for a second digital billboard along Highway sixty-five in Wheatland. This is in addition to the one that you've recently seen be completed in construction along Highway seventy near Ala First Avenue. The project on Highway sixty-five down toward Wheatland will have the same base treatment and county logo to meet our development standards. So you'll see that soon. And then also want to call out one of the tastiest additions to our building permit applications this quarter was Panda Express. This is to be located near the Walmart, and this shopping center is called North Beal Commons. If you recall, this center also has a current building permit application under review for the surf through car wash. So I've noted that on your slide so you can kind of orient yourself in the shopping center. And then, yeah, this will continue to provide additional commercial amenities and retail offerings in the community of Linda. Just two more departments left. We have our Public Works team, who ended the year certainly on a high note after making significant progress on the Los Ferreles Bridge replacement and Garden Avenue Safe Routes to School project, which is the photo you see here. This project, the Garden Avenue one, is installing curb gutters and sidewalks in West Linda and providing kids an opportunity to more safely ride, bike, scoot, skip, whatever they want to do to school. And then they also have a number of projects in design, as I mentioned earlier. We're certainly excited to take on the Plumas Lake Interchange project over the next few years. And then I'll round it out with our airport, which is located in Ala First. They did complete an update of their Airport Capital Improvement Plan and submit a design application to improve the runway. They also completed much-needed hangar repairs and maintenance this last quarter and continue to make progress on the ultralight activity area and expect to reopen this activity to the public soon. That concludes our update for your board, and I'm happy to take any questions and defer to my other directors and managers and staff that are in the room as well if you have any additional specific questions.
Questions.
You must have a smile frozen on your face all the time. And thank you very much. This is, this is something that we really need to get to the general public. They just don't understand how fast we're growing. But that's a phenomenal presentation for, and it tells staff, without you, we couldn't do it, you know.
Additional comments?
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you for reaching out this morning and saying thank you for being here. Appreciate that. But I also want to thank the department that's focusing on West Linda and the Safe Streets projects. Those kids out there, they're, they're on the streets the most out of anybody in our community. And so being able to get them around safely is a huge priority. The commercial stuff's a bonus, and, and it's nice that it's in a all-in-one area and it's kind of targeted, which is great. So I appreciate what you guys do and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor House.
Through the chair. So I mean, you might not know the answer to this, but what's the anticipated opening date for Los Ferreles Bridge?
I'm going to defer to Public Works on that one if I've got a Public Works volley in the office. Do we have Sam? Oh, Craig, there you are. Thanks, guys. I defer to Craig on that one.
And we anticipate that opening late spring of this year.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
Your will.
Okay. I just wanted to also compliment you. I had a call yesterday from a, a person that you've dealt with before looking for a building and now back actively looking for a building in our area. And he had great things to say about you. I actually gave him a number to talk to another guy and forwarded stuff to Jason as well. So let's see if there's anything out at the airport, so.
I appreciate that. And that's a great comment to add on to that, if I may, through the chair, is that it's our entire community development team that makes that possible. It's really easy to take a phone call and talk to someone directly. But when we have incredibly responsive people within our building department that can help me answer those questions for that inquiry, that customer, that potential business, that developer, as well as our planning team being really quick to like scrounge through the development code and come up with land use answers, I think that's what really makes this jurisdiction special, is the ability to, and even Public Works as well, sometimes they have off-site improvement questions. And so it's the rest of our staff's ability to help me answer those questions. And so collectively, we couldn't do that without the teamwork that we have. So I appreciate the accolades, and I'll make sure to share that with the rest of our staff.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's a compliment to everybody when you have somebody that was looking a year or so ago, and now things have changed, and he's really now actively looking and immediately called here to Yuba County because of the response he's gotten from your guys' whole team. So anyhow, just another compliment for you.
Love the presentation, Rachel. I love that there's home businesses, there are retail businesses, there's residential development, there's infrastructure projects, right? There's a lot going on in Yuba County. I really liked the quote from G2, so thanks for including that. I think it speaks volumes about the, our staff here at Yuba County and our mindset here at Yuba County, the board's mindset, leadership at the county staff level all the way down, that that's how we strive to be. And that's a testament to that. I also appreciate that this presentation, you know, when you look at it, the things listed here are all over the county, right? They're all over the unincorporated county, from the foothills to Plumas Lake to Highway sixty-five. They're everywhere. And so that's, that's great. There's great things happening everywhere, and this is a testament to that. So amazing presentation. And I hope lots of public sees it and can be aware of all the wonderful things we have going on. So any other comments from the board?
We get a copy of this presentation, don't we?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this item?
If I could through the chair, and maybe Rachel, you can fill in the board. But these presentations are on our county website afterwards. And that's, and it's definitely a nice resource for any of the board members if you need to link the public to. And maybe, Rachel, you can share that with the board members, maybe a link on, on where to go to find that.
Certainly. I made sure this morning that you, your office had a copy of the PDF as well that could be printed out. But yes, to Administrator Malin's point is, it also is available for the public on our website as well. So happy to provide any additional resources in that way.
Okay, looks like we have a public comment, I think. Izzy in the audience?
I'm Pastor Bob. I live out in Edgewater. And I listened to everything that was said. And my dad was a contractor. I grew up around it. I love building. So I appreciate all the stuff that's going on. I really, really do. Problem is, I'm going to ask you guys, I didn't hear anything about it. What about the infrastructure?
Okay. Thank you. Just so you're aware, generally isn't a dialogue back and forth. We accept a comment from the public. So certainly understand that, that concern. So, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, is there another public comment? Yes.
Hi there. My name is Anne Schumacher. It's great to see all the growth here in the county. One small little thing, and it's not a, you know, a dig or anything, but one thing that I noticed is that like, I know this has nothing to do with this, but I'm going to tie it together, is how DMV charges a fee to use your card. And everybody uses it either online or when you have to pay. And it's a pretty exorbitant fee. And I wonder like, who got that contract, right? Because it's basically another tax. So I was just kind of, I was just wondering as far as like the payments for Sycamore, the online payments, if they charge a fee and who has that contract, if that makes any sense. Because I think these are things that we need to look into more as, not just as a county, as a state, and as, as a country, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to general public communications. Thank you, Rachel. Izzy?
Any person may speak about any subject of concern provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, and it is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of fifteen minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action may be taken on comments made under this heading. And the first one, we have Pastor Bob.
Good morning. Once again, I'm Pastor Bob. I live out on Peach Tree Drive in Edgewater. I was here last supervisor's meeting to address the same issue. Traffic on Peach Tree Drive does not appear to have changed. People still race down the street forty, fifty miles an hour. I've had CHP out there several times. They have stopped by my house. I've talked with them. I've spoken with them at length about the problem. They indicate to me that the roadway is very wide, the roadway is very long, and just allows itself to be used as a raceway. Twice, you know, like I said, last month, I also had a conversation with the sheriff who was here, and I appreciate him. After my discussion that I had with you guys, he gave me information to go to their website to request extra patrols. I did that. So I've contacted both CHP, I've contacted Sheriff's Department. I have so far no information on the patrols from the Sheriff's Department. All I can say is that I have personally not seen any Sheriff's Department vehicles on Peach Tree Drive or in the immediate area since the last supervisor's meeting. That's not to say they haven't been there, okay? I never speak any kind of blame or any, put any kind of evil on, on our, on our Sheriff's Department. They do an awesome job on what they're allowed, but what they have, with their limited resources. And if he is working with the limited resources that I believe that I, and I know that he is, then it's up to this council to change that. He needs to be able to do his job. And you have to remember that you guys are the ones who serve the county, and the county is the people. And it is we, the people, that you swore to serve, respectfully asking you to do your jobs and find a solution. About a week after our last meeting here, I spoke with, or my supervisor came over by my house and we spoke. And I gave several different solutions to the problem. All of them were shot down. None of, no positive response was given as to how we might be able to deal with the problem. So at this point, I would like you, as the county supervisors, take on the potentially serious, if not deadly, situation. I'm, I am asking you to come up with a solution for not only my community on Peach Tree, but also the many other communities that respond to, that responded to my posts on neighborhood that are experiencing the exact same problems. Fixing problems. Fixing problems like this is one reason why you occupy the chairs that you do. Please don't wait for an animal, a child, to be maimed or killed by someone who thinks our residential streets and Peachtree in particular are raceways. It has to end, ladies and gentlemen. Your legacy, your legacy can be wiped out by one animal or child being killed or maimed on one of these streets. So I'm asking you to please take action. You have the power to find a solution and to end it. Please do your jobs.
Thank you, Pastor.
Next, we have Tony Farley.
Tony Farley, South Shore County, South City. Yeah, we got a new board member now. We got Board Supervisor Member House. What's up? Thank you for your service, Kevin, County Administrator, also known as Chief Saxon. Thank you, County Counsel, known as the McGeorge Lady. Thank you, Greg Bradford, he is a Sacramento. Thank you, John Miss, the cowboy farmer. And thank you, Seth Fuller, the future Board Chairman, hopefully. I'd like to support him to be Board Chairman, hopefully. And Supervisor House, thank you, because you're a new group, and any basket, thank you for your service for both Marine Corps, Vietnam and Reserve Deputy. Thank you, Chico Lady over there, Chico Lady. Thank you, Rachel, no Rachel, the coacher, Rachel. Thank you, Sheriff, big, big, big rock star over there. Thank you, Dr. Liu, the doctor. And thank you, um, thank you, Conference Manager. Thank you for your service.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have Mary Salvato.
I have some things I want to hand out. After hearing all the good things in the county, it's kind of hard to come up here and complain about something that is really off the wall. And I just had two comes. And I wrote something up because I guess I'll just read it. I'm, I've come here about a property, 1709 11th Avenue, it's Zoned R2. And it has two dwellings on it. In '22, I bought the property across the street and I did pull a permit after I approved legal ownership to move it onto that property. And I followed the building, county instructions. They said I couldn't even move the mobile home there before I approved ownership, pulled the permits and did everything, which was a hassle that cost me extra funds on the front end. But that's okay, I did it. In '23, a mobile home was moved across the street from me, I'm 1709. On a Sunday without a permit, it was a dilapidated thing that was all twisted. And I called the county, I let them know, I said, this thing has been pulled on this thing, on this property, and there is no permit. I got a little cold starting. And it's illegal. How are they doing this? Well, we'll look into it, we'll look into it. Well, it's never looked into, it's been there, it's stayed there, it's been remodeled, it's been soft set. It's on a soft set foundation, like a regular dwelling that's been there for years, and it has been there for years now. Well, it now is going to be permitted by the county. I was told by code enforcement not to be upset because they only may charge him $3,000. That's the cost of a reset soft set on an illegally permitted, non-permitted dwelling that they're going to allow to be permitted once it is legally split. So it's gone from being illegal to be legally split, to be able to permit it and give it a soft set reset permit of $3,000. I paid $28,000 for my permit to be able to place a trailer on a property. I'm upset because I'm getting this back and forth of, you know, I was told there's a, there's provisions on the backend to be able to allow him to go forward with this illegally set trailer.
If you can please wrap up, Mary.
Okay. So if all the people, the good people that pay their permits and everything knew that they could get away with doing this kind of thing, why would we even pay any permits? It's not right? And I'm just wanting to have it on record that I tried to talk to Kevin Malin, I called him twice. I tried to talk to Jeremy Strang, he wouldn't return my calls. Finally, when I went into the office twice to see Kevin Malin, he must have told Jeremy Strang to call me. He called me and he told me all of this. There's only going to be a $3,000 permit fee for this illegally permitted, illegal trailer that's been there for two years, remodeled and everything.
Thank you, Mary.
If I could through the chair, that's something, if you would like staff to report back out on the issue, we can.
I think that'd be great.
Okay, at a future board meeting?
Board would like that? Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
All right.
Anyone else, Izzy?
Yes, next we have Julie, I'm sorry for the last name, Tree.
Go by Chico Lady. I met Tony at the Sutter County Board of Supervisors, he's quite the rock star and cheerleader for you guys, so appreciate that. Julie Threed, I'm here from Butte County, appearing before you today to appeal to your sense of duty to protect the members of your community from a known toxin that's been administered by your health department, the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm traveling to every county in California to alert the supervisors and respectfully request an agenda item be placed on a future meeting so you can appropriately discuss this problem. We are here to assist you and your HHS Director, Jennifer Vasquez, with that special agenda item. And we can bring in expert doctors and researchers who can bring objective information and a level of expertise not available in our local governments. I'm a former healthcare worker in Chico, a retired HR executive of 25 years in Silicon Valley, and now lead investigator for VerzaWARE.com, an organization that helps victims file their vaccine adverse event report. I am vaccine injured myself by the COVID-19 Moderna vaccine. I suffer from microangiopathy, tinnitus, and have had two detached retinas. I was forced to quit my job at Enlow Health in 2022 when they mandated the booster that I knew would kill me. I had to walk away from a wonderful career and position on their volunteer services Board of Directors. During my time with Enlow, I also worked for the Butte County Public Health Department, assisting at the COVID-19 vaccination clinics in 2021, where I became personally knowledgeable of the problems with this shot from administrative errors to injuries that occurred right in the chair. So now for the past two and a half years, I've been a member of the medical freedom movement, working with honest doctors, researchers and journalists from around the globe to fight this evil pharmaceutical product that is an attack on our children, our elderly and our precious military. I will not leave this planet until there's accountability and full stop to this man-made disaster. I have spoken to the Butte County Supervisors more than 40 times over the past three years and have met with Sheriff Honi, but to no avail. They are too scared to tackle this problem and are embedded with the medical establishment of Butte County. So I have joined with Ronald F. Owens Jr. to speak before every county in California. So far, I've spoken to 11, year number 12. I've also spoken before the California Board of Pharmacy seven times and are urging them to stop providing vaccinations at the pharmacy where children are getting hurt. I've also filed a complaint with Sheriff Honi in Butte County as a whistleblower. I've spoken to representatives from Congressman Doug Lamoffa's office and Assemblyman James Gallagher's. I have also spoken to Congressman Ro Khanna. My mother died from four shots of the vaccine and she's got a compensation injury claim that's being adjudicated at the federal government. The lack of response and respect for us injured is infuriating and unacceptable. Again, I am coming before you to urge an investigation and full halt to the administration of this product in your county. I also request you notify your residents immediately and help them file their injury claim with the CDC. I hope you will be one of the first brave patriotic counties in California to do the right thing and stand up to Governor Newsom. Now is especially a good time, given President Trump's reelection and Robert F. Kennedy Jr.'s nomination to HHS Secretary. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I've given you a lot of resources. I've also given you a copy of a recently penned letter, December 30th, by 14 states attorneys generals that are furious with the way that the injured are being treated and they're asking for some, some information. And there's a lot of data in here about also how this shot is hurting people across the country. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ronald Owens.
There are thousands of people who have died from the COVID-19 vaccines and millions of people are, have been injured. On April 14th, 2022, Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Javier Becerra said this, "We know these vaccines are killing people of color, black, Latino, indigenous people at about two times the rate of white Americans." That's a shocker, isn't it? I'll repeat it again, particularly for Supervisor House since he's new on the board. "We know these vaccines are killing people of color, black, Latino, indigenous people at about two times the rate of white Americans." If you examine that quote, Becerra said that these vaccines are killing people, period. My name is Ronald F. Owens Jr. I was a public information officer at the California Department of Public Health for more than 14 years. I raised this issue with my management on multiple occasions. Unfortunately, they made it about me, not about you, not about the people in the audience, not about the people who may be watching now or be watching on replay. So therefore, they disciplined me. Look, I love all humanity, I don't care what color you are. But here are the optics. I'm this black guy telling my white superiors that we know these vaccines are killing people of color and what did my white superiors do? They disciplined me. They muzzled me. But I would not muzzle myself. So I prematurely retired on December 31st, 2023, immediately incurred a 55% pay cut. I'm not sharing this with you for my self-aggrandizement, I'm sharing this with you because I'm committed to sharing information that was muzzled by the California Department of Public Health. They've done a disservice to you and 40 million other Californians. So as Julie Threed mentioned, I've been going around sharing this information with other boards and supervisors. This is my 19th appearance. On July 29th of last year, I sent to this board a five-page PDF explaining all this information, who I am. And by the way, that particular Becerra quote is still on the White House's official YouTube channel for all to see and hear. In that five-page PDF, I also shared information about studies in Japan, Italy, Germany, how these vaccines are injuring and killing people. I also followed up with this board last month.
If you could please wrap up, Ms. Owens.
Followed this board last month that from August of last year through December, 400 people have filed vaccine adverse event reporting system, two people have died. If the Board of Supervisors had responded to my urging that these vaccines are killing people back in July of last year, those people would not be suffering today. I urge this board to discontinue promoting, administering and distributing COVID-19 vaccines and thank you for your time. This deserves more time. And as Julie Threed said, we're prepared to come back and share more. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment, Izzy?
No more and no hands through Zoom.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, we will move on to the county departments. All matters listed under county departments are action items, which will be considered and voted on separately. We're going to start with item 739, 2024, Human Resources, Adopt Resolutions, Amending Resolution Number 2024-065, Classification System, Basic Hourly, Salary Hourly Schedule, pertaining to a couple positions.
Well, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Cindy Clark from Human Resources. And the Sheriff's Department, in collaboration with Human Resources as well as with the County Administrator's Office, have identified a need to allocate a lead evidence position, or more specifically, a senior evidence technician, to be responsible for the management of evidence and property systems and space. The purpose of the new position will be to increase the accountability and efficiency of evidence and property handling to meet the growing work demand. In establishing the base salary for the new position, Human Resources maintain the integrity of the county compensation philosophy. And the intent is to fill this position internally and as such, it's estimated that the general fund cost will be about $3,500 for the remainder of the fiscal year. And the additional cost is to be absorbed by the Sheriff's Department fiscal year 2425 budget appropriations. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments from board members? Okay. Any public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move to adopt the Resolution Number 2024-065.
I'll second that motion. Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Excuse me, I note that there were two, mic's not, I'll just talk loud. My mic's not, okay, now it's working. There were two resolutions, I'm assuming that that board motion was for both of those?
Second?
Yes.
Okay. For the first and the second?
First and the second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Okay, next up is item 668, Community Development Services, Adopt Resolution, Adopting the Goal and Vision for the Yuba Sutter Regional Safety Action Plan. Morning, Sam.
Good morning to the board, Sam London, Public Works. Today's item is a resolution adopting the goal and vision for the Yuba Sutter Regional Safety Action Plan. We have Dan Peterson here today, who wrote the grant and has been helping us manage this plan. He'll give you a quick explanation on the goal and vision as well. We'll both be here to help answer any questions.
Morning, Dan.
Well, good morning, board. Chairman Bradford, good to be back. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Dan Peterson, I'm the retired Public Works Director. And I occasionally help out, either preparing grant applications or acting as a liaison with other agencies on some of the projects that we have going on. This is one of those projects that is an ongoing project that involves other government entities in the area, specifically Sutter County, City of Yuba City, City of Live Oak, City of Wheatland, City of Marysville. A little bit of history, the whole Safe Streets and Roads for All program is dedicated towards reducing our roadway fatalities to zero. That's the goal and it's both a federal and a state goal. Unfortunately, the Yuba Sutter fatality rate is about 70% higher than the national rate. It's somewhere, I think it's 18.74 fatalities per 100,000 people, which is far higher than the national rate, which is 11.7. So because of this, Yuba County recognized a need to address our safety issues on the roadway and somehow reduce these fatalities. We have done other safety projects in the past, looking at causes and mitigations that we can do to eliminate collisions or to at least minimize the severity of the collisions. In doing so, we completed a systemic roadway safety plan back in 2019 and then later did an updated local road safety plan in 2022. This new Safe Streets This new Safe Streets and Roads for All program is a federal program, and it has a slightly different emphasis. The emphasis is on looking at the infrastructure and trying to find ways to, if you cannot prevent the collisions from occurring, to at least minimizing the severity, slowing the speeds, changing the angle of impact, setbacks that allow a deceleration before impact, anything that can reduce the severity and prevent a fatal collision. Human error is going to occur. That's been accepted. And what we need to do now is find ways to protect human lives in the event of a human error. So initially, when we started looking at this grant application a few years ago, we were going to do this as a standalone Yuba County effort. But it became very clear to us very quickly. Sutter County, City of Yuba City, City of Live Oak, City of Marysville, City of Wheatland were also looking at this because they want to reduce the number of fatalities as well. Plus, having an approved Regional Safety Action Plan opens the door for a number of infrastructure construction grants as well in the future. So once we recognized this, we decided that the most effective way to approach this was to have a regional effort. And we went ahead, applied for the grant successfully. We are now working on this Regional Safety Action Plan. One of the requirements before this is recognized by the state and federal government is that the elected board, in this case, the Yuba County Board of Supervisors, must adopt a resolution that recognizes and adopts the goal and vision for this Regional Safety Action Plan, which is once again to eliminate traffic fatalities. And it sets a year or a date by 2050. And then the vision is to create a multimodal, sustainable, equitable transportation system where users of all ages and abilities can travel conveniently, reliably, and free from harm. So at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Board?
Oops, sorry.
Through the chair. I just want to come in the work you're doing. I lost my mother-in-law to somebody racing through a neighborhood. And it was right after construction upgrades in Yuba City, making the roads a little faster, a little wider. And so if there was something that we could do to reduce those type of fatalities or injuries, that'd be great. One question I do have, though, is will we still be able to apply individually for these type of grants in the future? Or would it have to be split between all those municipalities?
Oh, no, we can still apply individually. So each city or county can apply on their own once we have an approved Regional Safety Action Plan. But the implementation projects can be city or county specific.
Thank you.
Just a couple comments as well, and maybe a question. So as you mentioned, this is really focused on infrastructure, which is probably the number one way to reduce traffic injuries and fatalities. You know, the people will drive at whatever the design speed of the road is, right? So designing the road and the infrastructure so that people slow down is the best thing we can do. But as mentioned by the pastor earlier, I mean, another thing that complements that, certainly doesn't replace it at all, is enforcement. And I know in unincorporated counties in the state of California, that's a CHP responsibility predominantly. And so in addition to this infrastructure effort, and it might be outside of what you're doing, so it might be more of a general comment, I do think it's very important that we work with our partners at CHP to really step up enforcement in our community. I know, you know, folks ignore the speed limit tremendously, as well as stop signs, and those put pedestrians and others at serious risk. And I do feel like if we were able to get a lot more enforcement, people might think twice about some of those decisions that they're making. So anyway, probably just a general comment. I know that's probably outside the scope of this effort, but anything we can do to pair those things together, infrastructure and enforcement, I think are important.
And one thing I would like to point out, board, is that we are coordinating, the Sheriff's Department is participating in this effort, and they're an invaluable asset to this effort.
Great. Thank you, Sheriff's Department. Additional comments? If not, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Welcome back, Dan. Doing a great job as always on the grants, but I'd like to approve, adopt the resolution adopting the goal and vision for the Yuba Sutter Regional Safety Action Plan.
So I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Sam. And team. Okay, next, we're going to move on to item 743. Sheriff Coroner, approve United States Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Award in the amount of $14,458 for the Yuba County Flock Force Multiplier.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Board. I'm Casey Diaz, Administrative Services Manager for the Sheriff's Department. Happy to present that we were awarded the $14,458 through, yeah, long acronym, DOJ Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. These funds will allow the department to upgrade our flock operating system and enhance the capabilities of the system we already have, including the ability to collaborate with community partners and add to our network of resources and act as a force multiplier for the Sheriff's Department. The flock system is a Measure K-funded initiative that has already had a significant impact on the community. It uses license plate readers to aid in a myriad of operations, including stolen vehicles, wanted persons, amber alerts, silver alerts. And these alerts notify our dispatchers and deputies in real time for the most actionable responses. The awarded funds adds this ability for residents and businesses in the community to add, voluntarily add cameras, video feeds, even gunshot detection, if they choose to, to that same system and that same network that we share. This approach strengthens our community partnerships and enhances our operations to align with our public safety goals and the county strategic plan. Happy to answer any questions, but we are asking to approve the award. Yes.
Thank you, Casey. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, any public comment on this item? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
You have a first and a second. We need a roll call vote on this one.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor House?
Yes.
Supervisor Fure?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Casey. Okay, next up is 722, also the sheriff. Approve Grant Agreement with Yuba County Water Agency to Support the Suppression of Illegal Marijuana Cultivation in the Watershed Area.
Morning, board. G D Parker at the Sheriff Department. This agenda item is a recommendation to approve a grant between the Yuba Water and Yuba County Sheriff Department, support the suppression of illegal marijuana cultivation, amount of 70,000. That matches the current federal Department of Justice grant that we currently have. Yuba Water has identified illegal marijuana cultivation as a significant threat to the watershed, posing risks to water quality, wildlife, and public safety. The grant will support overtime costs for deputies conducting eradication operations and procurement of equipment, resources necessary for field operations. And there's no impact to the general fund.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments from board members?
I'll just make a comment. I went on a ride along with these guys last year. You guys get a chance, please go on a ride along with one of these, when they do one of these illegal marijuana eradications. It's, they've confiscated, well, went over 110,000 marijuana plants last year.
That's correct.
And we really need to stay on top of this and get it stomped out of our county. It's the damage they're doing to the environment and the waterways is just unbelievable.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor House?
Yes.
Supervisor Fure?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Okay, we've got one more item, and it's also from the Sheriff's Department. 718, approve the provision of additional remote video surveillance cameras at the Sheriff's Posse Arena in Browns Valley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Wendell Anderson, Yuba County Sheriff. The item that I have for you is a request to transfer funds is from our asset forfeiture account for the purchase of five cameras at the Posse Arena on Marysville Road. As you're probably all aware, over the past couple of years, we've received grant funding from the Water Agency, from the River Endowment, other entities to enhance the facilities there. And they're actually used for large animal during evacuations. And they've done quite a good job. We also have an arena up there that gets used pretty regularly by some of our folks in our community for roping, riding, and things. So currently, there is no security there. And through, by working with IT, our search and rescue team, our Posse members have identified the need for five cameras. There would be a live feed into our dispatch center and the ability to record. It's about $15,000, almost $16,000, actually. And it would be no impact on the general fund. It would be a transfer from our asset forfeiture to our expenditure account. The Posse, the members have agreed to take on the recurring costs, which would be a monthly payment to this company to monitor. So requesting your approval for that transfer and the purchase of those cameras. And any questions that you may have?
Thanks. Questions from board members?
Just another comment, that the Posse Arena is used for 4H events and community events. And I think it would be really helpful to have some security up there. It is sometimes kind of open, and they do have a lot of great things up there to protect.
Through the chair.
I've also used the Verkata system before for camera system at the transit agency. And they're really high-tech cameras, and they can look at license plates. They're reliable and everything else. So I definitely support this.
And if I may add also, I believe that's the same company the Government Center is using here, so it'd be a coordinated effort with them.
Awesome.
Is there a motion?
Any public comment on this item?
None.
Looks like we do have some public comment.
Good morning, board. Tom McWhorter from Oliver's. Morning, Sheriff. Through the chair, please. Yeah, just, what's the recurring costs you mentioned that these other organizations that would use it would be, you say, would be responsible for providing? And that's all my only question.
You know, Tom, I don't know. They said they were going to pay for it, so I didn't ask. It doesn't impact my budget, doesn't impact the general fund. It comes from fundraising and through membership costs, through volunteer organization. And I apologize, but I don't have that number.
Okay, then that begs another question. So if it doesn't come out of your budget, who's responsible for the equipment?
That would be, so under the recurring cost, it includes a maintenance plan. So that would cover any expense incurred with the equipment. So we purchase the equipment, it's maintained through the Posse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second that.
Okay, there's a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor House?
Yes.
Supervisor Fure?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Could I add one comment on the end of that, too?
Sure.
Yuba County Search and Rescue is having a fundraising dinner on Saturday, March 29th. So we should all go and support that as well.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, next, we're going to move on to Board and Staff Member Reports. Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes. I talked to Jeremy about an ordinance that would check and have inspections for any mobile homes that are out of a park and put on the private property. Because what we had is, we had people buy cheap mobile homes and put them on the land, and we just had a problem with that. And I'd like to give Jeremy the authority to put together an ordinance that requires an inspection and also doesn't leave any loopholes as far as inspection goes. There's apparently some areas that they've kind of overlooked. But as we've seen from the fires, when you have a mobile home, it goes up quick. So I'd like to let Jeremy, give him a vote of confidence from the board to go pursue that ordinance that he's been trying to get some support for. So does the board like to have an inspection on all mobile homes being installed on private property? I'd like a yes.
Well, I was under the understanding we can't because some of them are licensed by the state.
When they, when they're in mobile home parks, that's the case. But when they go into private property, we can.
If I could, through the chair, just to make sure. We don't want to get too far into the weeds on something that's not on today's agenda. But if it's something the board's interested in having Jeremy present this item for the board's consideration in the future, there is a lot of ambiguity when it comes to mobile homes on, you know, it starts out as a state-permitted structure. And, you know, and it's heavily regulated when it comes to mobile home parks. But when you take that structure and then move it on to private property, that's where there's some, there's some barriers that I think there's an opportunity for the county to maybe create our ordinance. Where I'm letting it be inspected and planned. And so that's something that if the board's interested, we could have Jeremy bring back a proposed ordinance that addresses that issue.
That would be great. Is there nodding of heads, consensus on the board?
Yeah, I would say bring it back. But through the chair, I'd just like to say, anything that makes housing more expensive, people are moving into mobile homes because of the cost of housing, not because the permitting costs are really low, anything like that. So anything we could do to keep the cost low. I know they pre-build these houses and facilities, and they do underpinning checks and electrical checks and all these checks when they move them in. But the permit is pretty inexpensive compared to a traditional home. But anything we could do to maintain that, I'd love to keep that moving forward.
Absolutely.
This will avoid fire traps being installed. And I think we have a duty to do that, so. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Supervisor House? It, sorry, there's no public comment during this time. Supervisor House?
Yeah, so last week, I spent a good amount of time with the Behavioral Health Advisory Board talking about... Oh, you go ahead.
Thought you were done, Supervisor Vasquez. Apologize.
That's okay. We had an incident discussed and a decision made at the last board meeting in the Water Agency. And a statement that was made by Director Bishop kind of hit home. And I don't know if everybody had heard about that. Or, you know, when I ran for office, I didn't expect to be sitting at a judgment policing my peers. Never something I dreamed would be part of this job. Director Fure, what I think you've done is created a slow-motion train wreck that has landed in our laps today. It's a shame that had to happen. Even through harassment training, it didn't work. When all this was brought to your attention, and you continued to do this this morning, your first response was, people just don't get your sense of humor. And incidents that you remember, you were joking. But you showed this behavior repeatedly. And you went on to accuse others of doing worse things. And then you began talking about conspiracies against you. And frankly, I don't think any of us elected officials in Yuba County are so important that a bunch of people get together and conspire against us. I don't think any of us have that much power. The most surprising thing about this is you had another opportunity to apologize. You had a total of three at that meeting, to take personal responsibility and say you're not going to work or work on changing your behavior. You have not done that, by knowledge. What you've done over the past few weeks has done nothing but bring us down. The article was in the Sacramento Bee. And the response that I got from a senator in the state government is that it's a disgrace and an embarrassment. And I think that he's creating a problem that makes people not want to come forward and not bring this up. And he has never apologized for his behavior. We had over 10 people that, in the investigation, and I'd like to see that we continue investigating as the new people venting their problems. We have to make this a safe place to work at. And this is part of our job as a supervisor, so. Thank you. That's it.
Supervisor House?
Yeah, so last week, I spent a bunch of time with the Behavioral Health Advisory Board and Mike Zegemeyer discussing some grants that Sutter County has, that Yuba County also has, about getting, reducing DUIs.
also has about getting, uh, reducing, uh, DUIs and, uh, incidents and fatalities caused by DUIs. And, uh, their focus is really on, on the kids in Sutter County. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to review some more information on that with, with our sheriff and find out and our district attorney, find out who's really affected in Yuba County. And, uh, maybe we can partner up on some of that and maybe even use, um, some shared resources to, to reduce the number of DUIs. It's, it's a huge number in, in the region. So some of the worst in the state. So just definitely want to get that down. And, uh, spent a lot of week, or a lot of months onboarding with Yuba Water and a lot of months meeting with department heads. And I just want to say thank you guys for, uh, allowing me to serve the county and allowing me to serve the public and the employees as well. Door's always open.
Thank you. Supervisor Fure?
Although it's certainly tempting, uh, to respond, I will instead defer my time to Mary so she can make the comment that she wanted to make concerning the trailers.
We, we don't have public comment during.
I can't defer my report.
No.
Well then, no report.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Messick?
Uh, just want to wish everybody a happy new year and, uh, thank our staff at the county. You know, it's just, things keep happening in my district. I reach out to Public Works or whatever and it's just immediate. I mean, everything's immediate getting back to me, whether, whether it makes everybody happier or not. At least I can answer questions to my constituents. And, uh, really just wanted to thank the staff for that. It's a happy new year.
Thank you Supervisor Messick. Counsel?
Just wanted to say welcome to Supervisor House.
Governor?
Yep, great, great comment Janet. Welcome aboard Supervisor House. And then, um, I did want to, um, give Oscar Marin, our Emergency Operation Manager, an opportunity to kind of brief the board. There's been some, uh, inquiries we've received as far as, you know, we, we have, uh, obviously, uh, the, the fires going on in Southern California, that, that draws resources from other areas of the state. We actually had a strike team from our area that headed down to help out with the fires. And so I figured Oscar could kind of brief the board, uh, on, on what that means for us as far as there's, there's been resources pulled away, but that is pretty common.
Okay, sure. Morning Oscar.
Good morning Chair. Good morning Board Members. Oscar Marin from Yuba County Office of Emergency Services. I'm the Emergency Operations Manager. Just a quick, um, overview. We went down and helped out our fellow, um, people down in LA City. To, we sent out a strike team from our county. Uh, we sent out one engine, engine 216 from Marysville Fire Department. Linda sent out an engine 262. Oliver sent out, uh, an engine 316. Uh, Yuba City, they were paired up with the Yuba City, uh, Fire Department with an engine, engine 34. And Hamilton City, that created a strike team that we sent out there to assist with the, the LA Palisade fires. They were assigned to Division V and are currently still down there assisting with the firefighting at first. We also sent out another Linda Fire Department engine. It's OES state engine. It was a compromise of a, um, various, uh, departments throughout the northern region on OES engines. And they also, uh, formed a strike team type one engine to help, uh, structure protections. Um, currently they're still, um, down there and though, we don't know when the return date will be, um, be let go. Uh, we're offered, uh, we're offering their assistance down there. Currently, uh, Yuba County is still well protected, um, for the inquiries that were again, if, were left, uh, unprotected. We're still well protected in, uh, Yuba County and the resources are still stronger. Any questions you may have about the incident or?
Any questions from board members?
Through the chair. Uh, you'd think they'd learn to trim, trim the bushes back because that whole area was just a fire trap, you know, and it's, uh, it would be nice to actually have the water down there, uh, in that reservoir. I didn't realize that they left a reservoir open for years while it's, point, it's supposed to be fixed. Uh, maybe we could send them a, uh, our manual on how to respond to fires.
I could take that, that picture down.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Governor. Is that it?
Yeah, that was it. Other than, um, if, if you noticed, uh, the chambers, uh, so our, our building that we're in, the government center, uh, 21 years, uh, actually I think in March, we'll, we'll have occupied this building. We're doing a little bit of a refresh. You know, we painted the walls. Um, the board members might notice, we also updated the photos in the chambers, uh, to reflect, uh, these are photos taken over the past year, Rachel, uh, it, it, in different, in, in the different districts in the county. And so we've put up a district map. So you have districts, uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, kind of aligned on the walls. Kind of tells a story about, uh, you know, Yuba County. So when somebody comes into our chambers, they say get a little flavor for, um, what's happening in different areas of the county. So just wanted to make sure the board was aware. We're, we're trying to make sure that, that, the, the, I'm sure we're going to have these chambers for another 20 years. And so just, uh, keeping it fresh. So, thank you.
Love the pictures and some of the other changes. So Izzy?
Through the chair, we have nothing to report.
Okay, uh, I have just a couple items. First of all, uh, thanks to Marysville and their contractor. It was, uh, wonderful to come into town this morning and be able to get here just a little bit quicker with normal traffic as opposed to, uh, extra traffic. So, uh, that's appreciated. Also congratulations to Public Works, um, for the Plumas Lake Boulevard Interchange Grant, uh, largest transportation grant or maybe largest, well certainly transportation grant I think we've received. Um, and so it's very exciting. I look forward to that project, uh, getting done. Also, uh, for the public and my fellow board members, um, this Saturday is the Yuba Sutter, uh, Martin Luther King Jr., uh, march that goes from Yuba City to Marysville. I think it's the 40th annual or 60th annual, uh, march. And, uh, so that, uh, starts, um, at the historic courthouse in Yuba City on Second Street and, uh, marches across the bridge to Marysville. It's at 10 a.m. And then there's a program, uh, that follows, um, at, uh, New Beginnings Wesleyan Church at Marysville, which is where the, the march ends. So I'd encourage people to attend that and, uh, honor Dr. MLK Jr. And then also, uh, just real quickly, uh, RCRC, um, uh, installed their, uh, new chair this year, or their chair for the year. Um, and it will be Jerry Byrne from Modoc County. And so I look forward to working with her. And I've, uh, been appointed to a few leadership roles there, uh, but the one that I really want to point out is, uh, I'm a member of the Carrier of Last Resort Ad Hoc Committee that RCRC has. So I know this is a, potentially a large issue, uh, in Supervisor Messick's district where AT&amp;T is trying to, um, give up the requirement that they provide copper landline service, uh, which in urbanized parts of the state that have many other options, I think that's great if they want to do that. It's an expensive old technology and costly for them to maintain. But where that is the only option for people, uh, and they rely on it for communication and particularly in emergencies, uh, we have to make sure that those folks are protected, uh, and, and have that ability to, to communicate. And in many cases, uh, copper landline is the only option that, that those residents have. So, um, continue to, to work on, uh, making sure that, uh, there's a common sense approach moving forward, uh, that allows them to get rid of infrastructure that truly is no longer needed and that they have to keep it, uh, where people are relying on it. So, anyway, uh, with that, uh, we have several closed session items as listed on the agenda. We are going to take, uh, a break until 10:30. And at 10:30, we will start closed session promptly. So, okay, thanks.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
In Marysville, where roots run deep, McNally Appliances promises to keep. The best brands with a smile on its face. We service what we sell. It's a warm embrace. Competitive pricing you can't ignore. With every purchase, you'll love it more. From fridges to washers, all in one line. We install with care to make it shine. Major brands, trusted and true. McNally Appliances is here for you. Oh, McNally McNally, we're your first choice. In Marysville, we help you rejoice. We service what we sell, don't need to stress. At McNally Appliances, we're simply the best. Our promise stands, we'll always be here. McNally Appliances, bringing your cheer.
McNally Appliances, 119 D Street, Marysville. McNallyAppliances.com. In Yuba County, there's a legendary diner.
Delicious. Oh my gosh, thank you so much.
Where the parking lot tells a story. A story as simple as biscuits and gravy.
The food is good. The prices are wonderful. My dad has so many friends here that come here and it's, my dad and mom, um, have known Mary Jane and, and her dad before Duke.
Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, home of legendary chili, holiday pies, and generations of local residents preparing tasty hearty food for generations of local people. Join Mary Jane and her genial associates as they serve meals you'll come back for. Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, Oliverhurst.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.
You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs, like temporary campaign style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company. On the web at sapphirmarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.